Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission, August 19, 2024. My name is Sina Najad. I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. Along with my great Commissioners, we welcome you today. Please silence your phones so it would not disturb the meeting. And with that, we're going to start with the roll call.
Chairman Najad?
Here.
Commissioner Beatty?
Present.
Commissioner Jabor is absent. Commissioner Jabea, absent. Commissioner Javed, absent. Commissioner Linton?
Here.
Commissioner Maiken?
Here.
Commissioner Noyola?
Here.
Commissioner Senegar, absent. Alternate Commissioner Harris is absent. Alternate Commissioner Sorrell, here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum. The minutes of the July 22 meeting were distributed to the Commissioners. If there are no corrections or additions, I would look for a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. And a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Fantastic. We're going to get started with case PZ 2024-217.
The applicant withdrew this request. So if we can strike that from the agenda, we can move forward to the next one.
Great. So let's go to PZ 204-223.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Brayden Gott of Fitz and Shipman has requested approval of a replat of lots 1 through 9, Luca State's addition into lots 1A through lots, or through 9A, Luca State's addition, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The intent of the plat is to adjust the northern property lines of the existing lots to increase the lot size for future development. Staff recommends approval of this request. We did send out 22 property owner notices. We received one in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review for the replat request. This is aerial footage of that area. And this is the proposal. And then a zoom in so that you guys can see the lots a bit clearer.
On the picture, there seems to be something on the second or the third lot from the left. Is there a building in there or?
Yeah, so I believe that it's a dilapidated building. So should any development go in there, they would have to demolish that or bring it up to code. But I'd imagine demolition would be the choice.
Okay. Great. Any discussion or questions?
We do have the applicant present.
All right. Mr. Gott? Good afternoon.
Afternoon, sir.
Would you state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have?
Brayden Gott, 1405 Cornerstone Court. One thing I have to add, yeah, that building's old, dilapidated. I would imagine they'd remove it in their future use. That's all I have to add.
Okay. Any questions for the gentleman?
None.
Thank you, sir. We now open the floor for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We do have the report from the staff. We also have the applicant. And I do look for a motion.
Motion. For approval.
Okay, second.
We have a motion to approve. And a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. PZ 2024-227.
Brayden Gott of Fitz and Shipman requests approval of a replat of Track 2 and Lot 26A, Block 3, Garden Villas replat into lots 1 and 2, Shady Gardens addition, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The intent of the plat is for Lot 1 to absorb approximately 149 feet by 195 feet of Lot 2, giving Lot 1 a depth of approximately 424 feet. This property is located within our city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is why it is before the Planning Commission. This property is located outside of the city limits. Staff recommends approval of the request. We sent 15 property owner notices. We received one in favor and zero in opposition. The area outlined in red on your screen is the area under review. So to give a better visual before we get to the plat, basically, this lot is extending the lot line this way so that this is a larger lot, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
This is a zoom in of what's on the land existing. And this is a picture of the plat. And then a zoom in of that plat. And we do have the applicant present.
Okay, great. Mr. Gott? Hello?
Let's see y'all again.
I guess we do have your name and address for the record. So with that, do you have any additional information you can give us?
No, sir.
And there are no conditions for the approval. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you.
Thank you.
Open the floor for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public comment. We heard from the applicant and also the staff. And I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve, file PZ 2024-227.
Second.
I have a motion to approve. And a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. PZ, okay, is this all of it, guys, for hours?
It'll, this is everything for the regular?
For the regular meeting, great.
Two minutes.
This case denotes the end of the regular meeting. Now we're going to enter into the combined Planning Commission and the City Council. And the Honorable Mayor West is going to lead us.
Thank you. Make me a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor West?
Present.
Mayor Potem Neal?
Present.
Councilmember Durio?
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw is absent. Councilmember Getz is absent. Councilmember Samuel?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. Quorum between both City Council and the Planning Commission. The only opportunity to speak on these islands is today. The Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council. Today will come before City Council and the next available agenda. For a decision, there will be no public hearing on the island of the City Council. There will be public hearing on these islands. Thank you for coming, and I'm going to turn the meeting back over to you, sir.
Thank you very much. Mayor West, we're going to get started with PZ 2024-163.
Yes, sir. Planning staff conducted a rezone study of Isla Street and surrounding areas bordered by Oakland Street, Magnolia Avenue, Maple Street, and Interstate 10 eastbound Fider Road. We received concerns of commercial uses encroaching into a neighborhood near the Isla Street area. Research revealed that this area has been zoned as light industrial since 1981. Development in this area has been stagnant, and very little industrial uses have taken advantage of this zoning district. To preserve the existing residential land uses and address a lack of development, staff is proposing a rezoning of the area between Oakland Street, heading east to Magnolia Avenue, and from Maple Street, extending south to I-10 eastbound Fider Road to encourage appropriate infill development to this area. The existing uses are predominantly residential with some light commercial uses, churches, and one truck lot. Therefore, staff is recommending a zone change from light industrial to largely residential conservation revitalization with GCMD-2 and neighborhood commercial zoning districts as displayed in Exhibit B of y'all's packet, which is also displayed on the screen. More specifically, the entirety of Oakland Street, including 1405 Isla, 1420 Concord, and from 1890 Magnolia, heading south where it intersects with I-10 Fider Road, is to be rezoned as general commercial multifamily dwelling district. This will foster continued commercial growth to the area along an arterial road. The southern side of Maple Street, including the 2,000 blocks of Linson Street, Forest Street, and Cable Avenue, ending at Isla Street, to be rezoned to residential conservation revitalization. This zoning district will allow for residential development and some light commercial uses with an approved specific use permit. 2036 Linson and 1260 Isla Avenue are recommended to be rezoned to General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District 2 as this land is an established truck lot. Staff recognizes the existing use and its proximity to neighboring residences. The GCMD-2 zoning district will allow the truck lot to be conforming and ensure necessary protection to the neighboring residences should expansion occur. The southern side of Isla through St. Charles and 200 feet south from the intersection of Isla and Cable Avenue is proposed to be rezoned to neighborhood commercial to allow for smaller neighborhood uses such as a corner store, beauty salon, a tax office, those kinds of things. Staff recommends approval of this request. We did send 213 property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On your screen, let's go back real quick, sorry. So this is, on your screen is the area outlined in red. That's the area that is within the rezone study area. And you can see that it is, it's all zoned as light industrial currently. This is an aerial footage of this area. You can see that a lot of it is not, or is underdeveloped. Most of it is light commercial use, or there's a truck lot there and a church. So a lot of this, because little industrial uses have taken advantage of the industrial zoning district, I would like to rezone it so that we can encourage appropriate infill development there. So again, this is Exhibit A in your packets. You can see it's all light industrial. And this is the proposal. So it'll change to a couple different zoning districts, but largely to protect and encourage more residential infill, but also some commercial infill that is appropriate within, you know, residences and whatnot, or residential zoning districts. Applicant is here, city of Beaumont.
Can you show us which one is the truck lot again, please?
Yep, right there. So it's not on the Google Earth image that we have, but it is established right there at that corner.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Demi? Any questions for the applicant? All right. Well, we basically don't have to visit with anybody else, right?
I think as-
Unless you have a question?
Yeah.
And any questions? Good. Let's go ahead and open the floor for public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
How are you today?
Fantastic.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Eddie McGriff, city of Beaumont, 4835 Ada Street. That's my neighborhood where I grew up.
Fantastic.
Still have family there.
Would love to hear from you, sir.
Yeah, I was concerned, I knew that the current zoning status was something that the citizens were not, the neighborhoods was not aware of. And so, of course, when this new entity came in with the trucking zone, took us by surprise. And I know we can't do anything about that because he falls upon the grandfather act. He's there already. So we just wanted to kind of maintain, preserve the integrity of the neighborhood. There are not one church, but there are three churches in that area. And within one block of the area, what was discussing, just outside of that, there are three of my family members there. And actually, if you go a little bit further, I know we're not considering it, but if you go back farther to Fairgrounds area, back toward Magnolia Park, there are some people that have put up some new homes. And I just, it's always been a neighborhood. It's always been a place safe for children to play in the street. But with the big trucks running down the street like they are right now and tanned up the roads, and I understand the city has limited funds on repairs that they can make throughout our city. And we'll wait our turn, but they're just adding to the deterioration of the roadways and stuff like that. And it's unsafe. It's unsafe. It's also noise pollution nuisance to the churches. The guys are working on their vehicles at night. There's an extraordinary amount of people that are, I know they won't tell you that they're living on the property, but they are. And so there are some people that have been there for quite some time. They're elderly people that would probably end up being displaced if you all don't approve of this because they don't have the funds, the revenue, to consider going somewhere else. So I'm really here to just act that you all would consider preserving the integrity of that community. And then respect also for what we know that neighborhood to be and for the houses of worship. There are four houses of worship, not on Isla, but there's two on Isla. And there's two just outside within a 500, 600-foot radius. That's all I have. I appreciate you all.
Now, look, I would encourage you to contact Demi because when these guys got their permit, they had stated several requirements that they agreed to. So we want to make sure that they are complying with that.
Yeah.
Noise and people living on the property and all that, those are things that probably can, the city can do something about. So I would encourage you to contact the city and visit with them.
And I did. I, again, it just kind of happened kind of overnight. And I know you think that's not such a thing. But I did contact the mayor, spoke with the mayor. The mayor went by and he looked at it. Had councilmen go by and they looked at it. It's, there's no way you can have 15, 16 rigs, dump trucks, and you don't have, that's, it's just, it's different. It's not the same. And there are, and again, we're not there to harass any people. We want to be a good neighbor. But then, you know, what's the real benefit of the current residents that live there? There's really no, there's nothing, there's no, there's no benefit to them that I see, I can see. So, and we know that they do have plans to expand.
But that might be the best thing, right? So when they expand, they're going to have to comply with everything else that's required.
Yeah, but again, it's the integrity. Because you got, I mean, think about it, you got kids. And there have been some housing development from low-income housing, homes on Linson. As a matter of fact, fund the truck lot all the way back up Linson to Maple. There are new homes that have been put in, low-housing homes and stuff of that nature.
We heard that there was no housing activity there.
No, there is.
That's when we went through.
There is.
Wasn't that in the report?
There is. It's from Maple, Linson, from Maple, Maple, Maple and Linson run, Maple runs east and west, I guess, and it boxes in Isla and Linson.
So it's on the northern part of it?
Right, Isla.
Okay, it's not within this?
And Interstate, we're not really concerned about, I understand. I understand domain and all of that, you know, with Interstate, state having the right of ways and stuff like that. We just never had this. At one time, back in the day, we had, you know, gas stations and barbecue pits and all of that along the road. And for whatever reason, they just decided to move. So that's my concern. I just wish you guys would approve of this.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right.
I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does, do the residents object to?
Yes.
New housing being?
No, no, not new housing.
Because that's one of the things that we were told that's trying to encourage.
Right, right.
New development in the area.
Yeah.
You're just opposed to?
The, as, again, you got to understand this, if there was no, if no one attempted to develop a commercial property, we was not aware of it. It just kind of happened, and then you're like, oh, really? Is this legal? Of course it's legal, it was something that the city has established many years ago. But they'd have never been challenged before. There's always been houses of worship, new houses of worship built as such. And, but that's, that's kind of the way it just kind of, just kind of sneaked in.
The city is trying to encourage development.
Housing fine.
Housing development in that area.
Housing is great. Housing is fine.
I guess if you were to talk with the community development director to find out if something else is going to be constructed, because they'd have to come here.
They're going to have to come back for a specific use permit.
Right.
And you would know it.
But, but the, if they rezone it now, if you guys approve of it, then that will, would that not prevent, not the type of, we named it tax offices, beauty salon, stuff like that, not that, not hindering that. But what we have now is not, is just not, that does not, that does not preserve the integrity of the community right now. That is just, you wouldn't want, not, you wouldn't want that in your neighborhood. Not kids, and kids, and still a lot of kids there, you know? It's not the most expensive neighborhood, of course. That's, I understand that. But it doesn't mean that people don't deserve to have a safe neighborhood.
Question.
Yes, sir.
The, and I guess, good, if I'm not mistaken, you're saying the rezoning is to?
Right.
Induce, get more residential building in that area?
Correct.
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're, now, what you're complaining about is this particular building.
Yeah, he's already in there.
It's already in there.
We know, we're unfortunate about that, I get that. I understand that. That was legally done.
But the zoning is trying to get, I think, what you're asking for?
Right, absolutely.
Is more residential in there?
Absolutely.
To allow them to come in.
Right, absolutely.
And I think that part is what the zoning is covering. That's why we, when you said not to pass it, then you're asking for that.
No, 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 I want that protection, yeah. I'm in agreement with what she recommended.
Okay.
Or what she's considering.
But yeah, I understand with your issues with this particular building, and like I said, you're looking at it, it expand again, like I said, then they would have to come back.
Sure, I think they are looking to expand. Because people have been approached, property owners that are in the, that are in the area, vacant lots and stuff like that. So I don't want to take up all your time, but.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, all right.
Good visiting with you.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the city and also the citizen. And I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve, filed PZ 2024-163.
Second.
There is a motion to approve. And a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Now we're going to go to PZ 2024-182.
Stacy Ishi requests a specific use permit to continue offering swim lessons at her home located at 8130 Shenandoah Drive. Ms. Ishi teaches private lessons from May to August, and group lessons are offered June through July. She teaches 10 classes per day with a maximum of eight students per class. Classes are held Monday through Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and then resume 3:00 p.m. to 6:45 p.m. Staff recommends approval with the following condition. Number one, per engineering, the driveway can accommodate four cars, and 17 cars can park on the street. At no point shall cars block driveways or restrict life safety vehicles to navigate the neighborhood. The owner of the business shall be responsible for enforcing such parking restrictions. Staff did send out 21 property owner notices. We received one in favor, one in opposition. In favor stating they made sure not to park on their side, so they have no opposition. Opposition stating too much traffic and noise. This is a business in a residential neighborhood. The area in, under review is outlined in red on the screen. This is an aerial footage of that property. This is the site plan. This is the subject property. Property is north and east, obviously a drainage ditch. To the south, northwest, and west. And I believe we have the applicant present.
Any questions for Demi? Ms. Ishi, I believe? Did I pronounce that right, ma'am? Okay, good.
Thank you. Some of those pictures, just in black and white.
Thank you.
Great. So if you'd be kind enough to state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
My name is Stacy Ishi, and my address is 2240 Turning Leaf, Beaumont, Texas. Do I just speak, or are you going to ask questions?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I stand before you today to ask that you grant a special use permit for my swim lessons because I believe it's what's best for the city of Beaumont. You see, I've lived here for 50 years, and I love our city. And I try to provide an excellent service that benefits families of our city. I provide swimming lessons to big kids, little kids, kids with special needs like Down Syndrome, muscular dystrophy, autism, cerebral palsy, old kids, 67 years old has been my oldest kid, young kids, 14 months old, inner-city suburbs and out-of-town kids. I have clients coming from Houston, Dallas, Austin. As long as I'm able to teach, kids from all walks of life will have an opportunity to achieve a lifelong skill. Teaching swimming is not just a job, it's a passion. There's something profoundly rewarding about watching a child transform from someone who is fearful of the water to someone who loves swimming. The joy of seeing those breakthroughs, whether it's floating on your back or jumping into the deep end with confidence, that's what fuels my commitment. I've always believed that swimming is an essential life skill. But the connections that I make with children are really what makes it special. This summer, five-year-old Jackson came up to me and said, "I'm a sinker." And he was convinced that he would never float. But after a few short lessons, he comes around the corner. He says, "Ms. Stacy, I'm not a sinker, I'm a floater," with a W. And the pride in his voice was palpable, and the confidence radiating from him reminded me of why I do what I do. You see, I don't just teach swimming, I teach life lessons like resilience and trust and overcoming fear and being courageous, and that practice helps you get better. Not every child loves the water. Some come and they're clinging to their parents. And that's one of the reasons why there's been cars, because I don't require parents to leave. I started this because I wanted to be a part of my children's experience. And so many parents want to see, and so that's why I have people parking on the street. Seven-year-old Sawyer said, "I hated it here at first, but now I love swimming." Hearing that transformation reinforces my belief in the power of perseverance and support. Safety is always at the forefront of what I teach. One of my mantras that every child and adult hears is, "What do you do if you fall in?" Turn, kick, and reach the wall, right where you fell in. I drill this into every child because I want them to be confident in any situation, whether it be in a swimming pool or an open body of water. In 30 years, I just finished my 31st year, but in 30 years, not one of my students has succumbed to drowning. But a lot of them have saved themselves from, after falling in. Two-and-a-half-year-old Gannon, after falling off the dock at the lake, making it back to the pole, says, "Hey, Mom, did you see that? I was swimming like a fish." His mom said it was really more like a rock, but he made it back.
Ms. Ishi, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention to you that you have three minutes, but I do make a motion to give you additional two minutes to speak.
Okay, I'm almost finished.
The second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go ahead, please.
Gannon saved himself. And I said, "The journey from fear to confidence, from uncertainty to mastery is what drives me." My effectiveness is clear. Many students participate in the swim team out at the Nittiterium that the ISD has. And I teach beginning as well as advanced. I feel incredibly blessed by God to have the opportunity to teach such an important skill to anyone who walks in the backyard. I strongly ask for your support in granting this permit that I might continue to offer life lessons for the betterment of Beaumont, Texas. My program provides an essential service, and I have a positive impact on our community. If you approve my request, I'm confident that I will continue to be a positive force. to be a positive force for our great city and a trusted instructor for many families for the future. Thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. You said that you live on Turning Leaf, but the location is at Shenandoah Drive.
Yes.
So who's at Shenandoah Drive?
Um, my son owns the house. My parents owned it for thirty years, and then now my son owns it.
Okay, thank you.
Logan Ishi is his name.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Ishi, how are you gonna police the cars that are gonna be nuisance to some of the neighbors?
Well, I, across the street, not, not this house that you see, but next door, they're elderly, and they came and said, "It makes us nervous if they're on both sides." So I had signs made that says, "No parking on this side," all by their house, so that they would feel more comfortable. I don't know who complained, so I hope that helped. I stress to people that come, please do not park, block driveways, trash cans, mailboxes, I have signs out. I, I have a little meeting with the parents. And then, like on trash day, I fly out of the pool when I hear the trash truck, and I make sure that everyone's trash gets emptied. In thirty years, I think I've missed it twice, two times. And so I just try to tell people, please be considerate. And if they're in violation, then I would ask them to move, so...
Any other questions for the lady? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let's open the floor for a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Go ahead, please. The lady is straight out?
No, she can go first. She's already up.
Well, okay, you go first, by popular demand. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Spots, and my address is 2425 Shadow Bend Drive, Beaumont, Texas. And I wrote my comments down, so I can do it quickly and concise.
Good.
Um, I have lived in Beaumont my entire life. I have seven children and soon to have fourteen grandchildren. Can I just be honest? I do not want to be here. I do not want to speak in front of you. It makes me nervous and very uncomfortable. It scares me. But what scares me more, the unfathomable thought that Stacy Ishi might no longer be permitted to teach swim lessons. So I have no choice but to be here. I must do all I personally can to ensure that Ms. Ishi is granted a specific use permit and allowed to continue teaching lessons to the many children and adults of southeast Texas that have yet to master the important and necessary life skill of swimming. I know that we have the Wellness Center and the Naddatorium that provide swim lessons, and I'm grateful for these facilities. But they cannot possibly meet the huge demand that we have in our area for swim instructions. But even if they were adequate, I would still be standing before you. You see, I really believe that Stacy Ishi is the best swimming teacher there is, anywhere. Truly, I mean it. She is uniquely equipped and supernaturally gifted when it comes to teaching children, whether it's in the classroom or in the backyard swimming pool. She has often been referred to as the child whisperer, and rightly so. Her kindness, compassion, and creativity, coupled with her amazing way of communicating to young children, and her rare ability to instill confidence, courage, and bravery in the most fear-filled of hearts, enables Stacy to be successful in teaching all her students to swim. Many years ago, my husband and I adopted our third set of little girl twins. Though they were seven years old, Alex and Alyssa could not swim. And we had a swimming pool in our home, at our lake house, and at our ranch, so it was critical that our daughters learn to swim immediately. So of course, we called Ms. Ishi. The girls were terrified of the water, which resulted in much screaming and sobbing on that first day of lessons. But Stacy did what Stacy does. With much love, patience, and excellent instruction, Alex and Alyssa learned to swim before the week was over. This summer, twenty-three years later, we continued the family tradition, and Ms. Ishi taught five of my grandchildren, including two very frightened, strong-willed two-year-olds. They started the lessons with tears and lots of wailing, but finished the week jumping off the boards, swimming to the ladder, and asking with big, proud smiles on their faces, "Can we come back tomorrow?" It is truly unbelievable the transformation that takes place in the hearts and in the abilities of the children in just a few days under the care and instruction of Ms. Ishi. She is truly a miracle worker. I find it worth noting that though my daughter lives in Memorial in Houston, she drives to Beaumont for swim lessons. My good friend's daughter lives in the Woodlands, yet brings her children to Beaumont as well. I ate lunch with a friend just today. He reminded me that her grandchildren come from Highland Park in Dallas to take swim lessons from Stacy. What an asset Ms. Stacy is to southeast Texas, which truly is one of Beaumont's greatest attractions. I've spent the last several years crying, visiting with, and counseling a grief-stricken, broken-hearted young mother, whose beautiful little three-year-old boy drowned in their backyard swimming pool. Sometimes, no matter how much we prepare and try to protect and pray over our children, tragedies still happen. But as parents and grandparents, we want to be sure that we're sure that we've done everything in our power to keep our babies safe. For thirty years, Stacy has taught thousands of children to swim. There is no way of knowing how many lives have been saved, drownings prevented, and unimaginable suffering avoided due to the life-saving skills learned in her classes. Not one student out of the thousands that Ms. Ishi has taught has ever lost their life due to drowning. What an invaluable service that Ms. Ishi has provided to our community. So I'm asking each of you to vote yes to grant Ms. Ishi a specific use permit, so her incredible life-saving ministry to the families of southeast Texas and surrounding areas can continue. Thank you for listening, thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I'll tell you, the, how you started with your fear of life and fear of her not getting her way, that's fantastic. Who wrote this speech? Did you write it? You're gonna have to start advertising and do this professionally.
Oh, thank you.
That's very nice, thank you. Have a great afternoon. I'll pity the fool that you're gonna have to write against. All right, who's next? Good afternoon, ma'am. Very well, thank you. Would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Kathy Cleveland, and I actually live in Lumberton on Crestwood, at 11820 Crestwood. But my business is here in Beaumont.
Do we let out-of-towners speak, counselor?
She says she has business in Beaumont. You wanna use your business address?
Uh, 7999 Gladys.
Fantastic. We would've let you talk anyway.
Well, I don't think I can really say a lot more than she just did, because I'm not as prepared. All I wanna say is that Stacy has taught my grandchildren for the last three years, and the oldest one, I think, has finally got it. So I need her to still be there, so I can get the three-year-old swimming like a fish. As far as the parking, I mean, I know I saw the signs this time, and I didn't notice any problems. We're only there for an hour, and I think everybody's been really diligent about making sure they don't block the garbage cans or the driveways or anything like that. So I hope that you do grant her
Thank you, ma'am.
special use permit.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this? Good afternoon. Oh, my goodness. Do I know you?
I think you do.
How are you?
I'm okay. How are you, Sina?
Great, great.
It's nice to see you. I didn't know you did this important thing.
Please state your name and address for those of us that don't have the privilege of knowing you.
My name is Mrs. Kate Nelson. I live at 7325 Halliday Lane in Beaumont, Texas. Thank you, Planning and Zoning Committee, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Mrs. Kate Nelson, and I have been a resident of Beaumont since 1981, when I came here to go to Lamar University. My husband since 1960. I also want to tell you that we, my husband and I, have three children, and I have a son at Lamar, and he is a fourth-generation Lamar University student. So to say we believe in Beaumont is an understatement. All three of our children were born in Beaumont, and they all three continue to live here in the city of Beaumont, because we love Beaumont. We met Stacy Ishi years ago when she taught our then-five-year-old to swim. That five-year-old is thirty-five. Since then, Mrs. Ishi has taught all of our children, and now our three grandchildren, how to swim. All of these lessons were taught in a neighborhood backyard swimming pool, the same pool that she uses today. Here is the fallacy that I'm not sure you're aware of. Just because you can play the piano does not mean that you can teach lessons. Just because you have a license to be a lifeguard does not mean you know how to instruct people how to swim. We tried other swim lessons, services like the YMCA, the Naddatorium, and the Wellness Center. These young, precious lifeguards could save our children's lives, but they could not teach our children to swim. Saving lives and swim instruction are two very different things. If we do not allow these great swim instructors like Ms. Ishi to conduct business in backyard pools, I'm afraid we will pay the cost in the lives of our local children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good to see you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? You have three minutes, ma'am. Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Catherine Messina, and my address is 6120 Clayborne Drive here in Beaumont. I do not have a speech prepared, but I can tell you that I've had other swim instructors try to teach my child to swim, and it was not successful. Last year, when my daughter was two years old, I watched her fall in our pool. She didn't know what to do. I tracked down Stacy Ishi and begged her to let me get into one of her classes. Luckily, we did. She had an opening. My daughter took the lessons with her. After a few days, we got past the fear, the crying. She didn't want to jump off the diving board. We made it. We went on a family vacation, and she was playing with her cousins that were a few years older than her by the pool. As any, you know, what are you, what are you expecting me to tell you? She slipped and fell in the pool. She did exactly what Ms. Stacy taught her to do, turn, kick, and reach. I was able to sit back and not be in fear, like my mother-in-law and my brother-in-law were. They were jumping in the pool to get her, and I said, "She saved herself. She has learned what to do when you fall in the water." It brings me to tears, because I know that not every child gets that opportunity. But my child swims like a fish at two years old. This year, when she was three, Ms. Stacy taught her again, along with a group of her friends, because everyone that has seen my Caroline swim says, "Who taught her how to swim?" Because they know it was not me, and they know it was not the person that was teaching her prior to Ms. Stacy. He was more of a babysitter in the water, because she knew how to work him. She cannot work Ms. Stacy. Ms. Stacy is the boss. She is going to teach you what to do, whether you want to do it or not, and you will be able to save yourself if you fall in the pool. So now I have a little three-year-old, actually, she just turned four last Friday, who can now swim the entire length of our pool. She can dive down to the bottom of the pool, so thankfully, I don't have to go get her toys anymore. She can do it herself. And Ms. Stacy has even recommended that she could be on the swim team in a couple of years, because she's that good of a swimmer. So I definitely think that Ms. Stacy is a huge asset to the Beaumont community. The other thing to keep in mind, too, is that not all places that offer swim instruction start at such a young age. And I think that's very important to take note of, is that Ms. Stacy will take them younger than most of the other places in town. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody that would like to speak against this case? Look, you can't, you can't up the other guys, right? Just for the sake of time, I'd like to see if there's anybody against the case. None is heard, so with the attorney's permission, we close the public hearing. No? Okay. The lady in the back, in the green. Please. I was trying to save you, but they didn't let me.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Ms. Stacy taught my three children as well how to swim at a very young age. Also, she taught my nieces, she taught my godchildren and my neighbors on my recommendation. She also helped...
Forgive me. Uh, your name and address for the record, please?
Lynn Hill, and my address is 2885 Willow Place, Beaumont. I'm sorry.
Sorry for interrupting.
It's okay, I'm sorry. I should've stated that. And so, and she also, because I, a lot of black women don't like to swim because of hair issues or whatever, but she also taught myself and my sister how to swim. So not only can my children swim really good enough to be on a swim team, so can I. And another thing that she did that a lot of swim instructors don't, when she taught my godchild, my godchild was two, but, and she did the same with my children. She has them come to the pool, fully clothed, shoes and everything, to simulate an accidental fall in the pool, because most people, if they're accidentally, you know, fall in a body of water, they may not have on a swimsuit. And teach, and she taught them all how to turn and get back to the side of the water. Another life-saving skill that she taught was treading water, because sometimes you may have to do that when you get fatigued swimming in order to be rescued. You may need to tread water for a while in order to, you know, sustain your strength to be rescued. And I'm, I'm cutting through this, because some people have already said exactly what I was going to say. But her lessons teach children and adults not only to swim, but it teaches them confidence-building and self-esteem. And the lessons sometimes help people and families overcome generational fears and help them to rebuild and enjoy the water after near tragedy. And I say that because I have an acquaintance whose child, when she was three or four, was a near drowning. And I, a near drowning to the fact that she had to be resuscitated by the EMS, emergency personnel, and flown to Houston and spent several days at Texas Children. She had two older brothers who were in elementary school. They all witnessed this. So needless to say, they were all traumatized. So the next year, when Stacy was enrolling for her swim lessons, I had a talk with her about this. I said, you know, "This family really needs you, because that, number one, they need to know how to save themselves, and they need to overcome this trauma." So I explained to her what had happened, and she agreed to take her for lessons. She put her in with my godchild in a select group. It took a lot of care. It took a lot of counseling to get them over that. The mother could not come, because she was triggered by what had happened to her child the previous summer. And she did not want to see her kids screaming and crying, crying, because it brought back those memories. So I took her every day, and the first couple of days, it was bad. Needless to say, there was a lot of crying, there was a lot of screaming. The brothers, they were terrified, because they remember what had happened to their sister that summer prior. But with work and with coaxing and her guidance, she helped them to overcome that fear and that trauma. So what started out as tears and being terrified ended up, after those two weeks, of being laughter and not being so afraid of the water, and it given them their power back over that. It gave them that sense of control. So what she does is a lot more than splashing in the pool. It's really a service for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? I think you ran out of friends, ma'am.
No, there's plenty more. They're just in the car.
No, go ahead. Come on down. Good afternoon, sir.
My name is John Ishi. I'm Stacy's husband. I'm Mr. Stacy affectionately to the children. I just wanted to address real quick the parking issue. You guys had asked a que, or one of you had asked a question about the parking. Typically, everyone parks on the, on the non-cul-de-sac side. There's a, where the canal is, and it's, there's a barricade right there. There are no homes that... Yeah, if you look at that right there, from the mailbox all the way around to the left side, most people park on that side. We have since started asking people to park only on the one side, because it makes the trash truck travel easier for them to maneuver through there, because those trucks are pretty big. So if you have cars parked on both sides, we typically ask them to move over to the other side. And we've even had, we've even had the, the mail service come by. They get out of their truck, they put the mail in the, in the mailbox, and they took lessons from Ms. Stacy as well. So lots and lots of people have come by, and they want, they want lessons. But I just wanted to address the logistics of this parking thing. On the other side, if you, I think there's another photo, the, yeah, if you look at that side, there's the cul-de-sac side. Most people, so that parking on the, if you look at the, my left side, under that tree right there, that, that's a pretty long stretch right there. We've taught everyone and I think we've taught everyone on that side of the street how to swim. Uh, parking is not typically a problem over there. And the trash truck comes typically around two, between two and three-thirty in the afternoon. So, yeah, I'm cognizant of the fact that trash is a problem. It's only on Wednesdays. It's, so one, one day out of the week, we make sure that the trash gets picked up. The only problem I think comes from the other side of this, my right-hand side of the street. When people are double parking, it's typically grandparents that show up and just want to see, oh my gosh, I want to see them swimming. And they haven't been there for the past eight, seven, six, six, seven, eight days, learning, watching what's going on. They just show up at the last second. We didn't know they were invited, which is no big deal, but we just didn't know that they were. Everyone else is cognizant of the fact that they need to park only on one side and pay attention to the signs. But inevitably, you get somebody who wants to show up and they don't want to follow the rules and you have to dress them.
As long as you're dressing them. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We close the public hearing. Now we heard from the staff, the applicant, and a group of great friends that she has. And with that, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve, file PZ two thousand twenty-four dash one eighty-two.
Second.
We have a motion to approve.
Is that with a condition?
With a condition.
With the one condition.
We have a motion to approve with the, with one condition. And a second with the condition?
Yes.
Fantastic. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in oppositions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck, ma'am. Uh, we're gonna go to PZ two zero two four one nine nine.
Yes, sir. Jacuzzi DeRusso requests approval of a rezone from residential multifamily highest density to light industrial for the property located at thirteen thirty Linson Street. The intent of the rezone is to expand the existing business at twenty fifty-five Hemlock, which is called Precious Metals. Staff recommends approval of the request. We did send twenty-four property owner notices. We received zero in favor and one in opposition. Opposition stating, my sister and I plan on building a forever home for ourselves. We shouldn't and don't want to deal with unnecessary complications with building our, on our property. The area outlined in red is the area under review. You can see that corner, um, the corner of, I'm sorry, I said, uh, thirteen thirty Linson. I meant thirteen thirty Lincoln. That corner, um, is zoned as light industrial. That is the area where Precious Metals exists. This is an aerial for, or image of this, of the area that's under review. This is the subject property. To the west, that's Precious Metals. To the north. East and south. And I don't believe we have the applicant or owner present.
I am here. Present.
Oh, he's here.
Good afternoon, sir. Would you please state your name and address for the record? Give us any additional information you might have.
Yes, sir. Uh, good afternoon to everybody. The one opposition is from a de-laffedated house.
Yeah, your name and address please.
Oh, sorry. Jacuzzi DeRusso, and I'm the owner of Precision Milder Arc in Beaumont, Texas.
Okay.
The one opposition is from a de-laffedated house. They're planning on having their free house rebuilt. I can't say if that's gonna happen or not. The area has already been zoned for light industrial next to Exon Mobile, and the property I already own is twenty-five, twenty fifty-five Hemlock is already light industrial, so I bought a little speech I would give to y'all. I recently purchased thirteen thirty Lincoln Drive adjoining rear of my twenty fifty-five Hemlock property, which is already zoned light industrial. I would like to zone thirteen thirty Lincoln to match the light industrial zoning. I know Beaumont is a place of opportunity and potential for growth. So my request should be reviewed as a step in progress, which Beaumont is so famously known for. With the rezoning of the newly acquired land, I will be able to expand my business with much-needed space to be a better asset to the community. The shop was started by my grandfather in the back. I am a certified combination welder as well as a certified welding inspector, and I feel like this would be a great asset to this community. I'm here for any questions.
So tell me exactly what you do, sir, in this place.
Yes, sir. We have a small welding shop that provides mobile and shop services for southeast Texas. I'm planning on using the extra land to potentially start teaching people how to weld. And I want to come ask for approval and blessing of City of Beaumont before I started making any plans with it. With that space, I can have more boots, more machines to make that happen.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, obviously, you're bound by all the other requirements for welding boots and, uh, smoke and all that good stuff, right?
Of course, yes, sir. And like I said previously, nobody opposed this except for that one property that is de-laffedated already. And they're hoping on a rebuilt house being built for free. I don't know why they think that might happen, but I think everybody's in the same agreeance that this is good for the community and for us as well.
But you're not manufacturing anything here, right?
No, 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 sir. But with the addition of this property, we have big plans, so that's what we doing here, going through the.
Any questions for the gentleman?
How long have you, uh, historically been a welder?
I am twenty-seven years old. I became a combination welder at nineteen. I became a welding inspector at twenty-two.
That includes stick, MIG?
That includes stick, TIG, MIG, flush core, stainless, carbon steel, and all positions, and pipe.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
No problem. Thank y'all for your time.
Absolutely. We open the floor for public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to speak against this case? Anybody that would like to speak for the case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the gentleman and his plans on what he's gonna do, and, uh, we also heard from the staff. There are no, uh, conditions, and the staff has recommended approval. With that, I'll look for a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Good luck, sir. Uh, PZ two zero two four two three zero.
Uh, I believe it's two one four.
Two fourteen.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. So PZ two zero two four dash two one four.
Yes, sir. Jamie Johnson is requesting approval of a rezone from PUD, Planned Unit Development, to GCMD, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling or More Restrictive Zoning Use, or Zoning District for the property located at thirty-five ten South Martin Luther King Parkway. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow for commercial development. The proposed rezoning appears to be in accordance with the comprehensive plan as it would allow for expansion of growth of businesses within the conservation revitalization area. Additionally, the property fronts an arterial, arterial road, which typically fosters commercial and higher-density uses. Planning staff recommends approval of the request. We did send seventeen property owner notices, received zero in favor and zero in opposition. The area outlined in red is the area under review. You can see that's at the corner of Martin Luther King Parkway and El, LG. And then you can see that it, it also aligns with, um, the corner property to the north as well. This is the aerial footage. This is the subject property. North and northeast. Subject and south. To the west. And I do believe we have the applicant present.
Great. The applicant? Good afternoon, ma'am. Would you like to come over and state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information?
I don't have any additional information, but my name is Jamie Johnson. Address is four eighty Giles, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 zero five.
Good. And you do, you own the property, right?
I do not own the property. Um, I'll be leasing the property.
Okay. And, uh, there are two folks that signed this letter that you're wishing to start a used car lot?
Yes, it was myself and the owner of the property.
Okay.
That'll be leasing it to me.
All right. Are you gonna have a building on this property?
We will.
Okay. Do you know how many cars you're gonna have out there, or you're gonna have? Uh, is, if, Tammy, is the fencing required in here?
So looking at the, um, property, it looks like possibly depending, I'm assuming you're bringing in a building?
Yes, and we, we will be putting fence up.
Yeah, it would be fencing to the, um, west and south. That would be required.
Not on Martin Luther King?
No, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, great. Any questions for the lady? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We have the case two one four recommended by, for approval by the staff and, uh, they're gonna have a building over it and they're gonna have fences on the two sides. And with that, I'll look for a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Let's go to, which one's next now?
Two two two.
Two two two. PZ two zero two four two two two.
Yes, sir. Braden Gott of Fitz and Shipman requests approval of a rezone from residential single-family to Neighborhood Shopping Center. According to the comprehensive plan of Beaumont, this area is located within a low-density rural area. Within the definition of this area, it states, "Commercial, Light Industrial, and Resource Extraction Operations should be limited to very low development densities, provided their environmental impacts are minimal or can be made minimal." The proposed zoning district allows for uses that could benefit the growing areas such as veterinarian services, general merchandise stores, food stores, apparel, restaurants, insurance, tax offices, et cetera. This could allow for the neighborhood stores and localized shopping for residents, or, I'm sorry, this could allow for neighborhood stores and localized shopping for residents north of Highway one oh five. Um, we did, or staff recommends, recommends approval of the request. We did send twenty-two property owner notices. We received one in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, the area outlined in red is the request for Neighborhood Shopping Center. This is aerial footage of that area. Subject property. Subject in east. West. South. And I will say that this area is starting to build up, um, in, with residential single-family homes out there. Um, I believe that we have the applicant present.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gott? You have any additional information you want to give us?
No, sir. Here for questions if y'all have any.
Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and there was no additional comments from the applicant, and I'll look for a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. We're gonna go to PZ two zero two four two two eight.
Tyler Wharton is requesting a specific use permit to allow a tool and equipment rental store at thirty-one oh five East Tex Freeway. This property was previously a car dealership and has an existing office, parking lot, fencing, and lighting. The applicant will offer selling and leasing of tractors, trailers, and handheld construction equipment. The development of the site would be compatible to the existing development along East Tex Freeway to the northwest and would infill a commercial gap along the feeder road. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, any construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. Number two, any construction plan shall comply with all applicable fire and building codes. Number three, any installed lighting shall be diverted from residential uses to the west, to the west and south. Staff sent twelve property owner notices and received zero in favor, zero in opposition. Um, the area outlined in red is the area under review. This is aerial photography. Subject property in north. To the west. To the south. To the east. And going back to this slide, I believe that is in process of demolition, not by the City of Beaumont, but by, um, he wanted to raise the property on his own accord. So he has a demolition permit. And I believe we have the applicant present.
That house is not the same applicant, is it?
Different owner.
Unrelated, okay.
The reason I mentioned that, going back to this, so that is, it's abutting, that, the area that's RMH, um, abutting the GCMD area that's outlined in red, um, it is zoned as residential, but they are, um, raising that structure.
Okay, great. Any questions for Tammy? Uh, Mr. Wharton?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, my name's Tyler Wharton at twenty-four sixty-seven Calder Avenue, Beaumont, oh two.
Great. Any additional information you'd like to give us, sir?
Uh, we're just doing light equipment, Bobcats, uh, we've got five Bobcats, a couple of skid steer, or, sorry, skid steers, Mini X's, not too many tools, but slight equipment. It was a dealership. The lights are actually installed already from when we purchased it from, it was a part of the new car store just to the north of there. Um, so the light's already installed. The building was removed. We're adding a new building back, which we've added, and we have to pull the permits to get that done, but it's just gonna be kind of a small little operation. We don't have a lot going on there. It was a kind of difficult property to rent, so we're gonna just do something internally with it.
Okay, great, great. You understand the three conditions?
Yes, yes, which pertains mainly to the building there and getting that up to code.
And you don't have any issue with that?
No, 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 no. We've actually already pulled permits for it, I believe.
Good, thank you.
Uh, the building behind the RC, or RMH is a part of the G-two property behind. Um, and he's wanting to develop that medical, the owner, so that's all one piece there, which is four acres. We're points, we're point six nine acres. He's got four acres.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Great, great. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and the applicant, and I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve, file PZ two thousand twenty-four dash two two eight.
With?
With the three conditions.
We have a motion to approve with three conditions, and a second, any discussion in the matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. And last but not least, PZ two zero two four two three zero.
Mr. Wharton again?
Yes, sir. Tyler Wharton is seeking approval of a rezoning from Residential Conservation Revitalization Historic District to Residential Conservation Revitalization, and a specific use permit to allow a restaurant, professional administrative offices, retail, and a music studio at six six zero North Seventh Street. Mr. Wharton recently purchased this property and intends to renovate it for smaller commercial tenants to serve the unique historic area and its residents. This area is considered a stable area within our comprehensive plan of Beaumont, and therefore, staff is recommending approval of the request with the following condition. Number one, the music city, studio shall adhere to section twenty-eight point zero, four point zero zero seven performance standards of the city's Code of Ordinances. Staff sent seventeen property owner notices. We received two in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, the area outlined in red. On the screen, the area outlined in red is under review. This is the aerial image of the property. As you can see, this is subject property, and it's a multi-tenant structure, which is why there was several uses listed. To the northwest. To the north. East. West. And south. And we do have the applicant present.
Any questions?
Yeah. I know this is a rezoning, but this did not have to come before the historic commission?
A rezoning, no.
No, I know, but I mean, the uses of the building?
Uses, no. They come to planning commission. As far as any exterior renovations, if it's deviating from the historic codes, then yes, that would be reviewed by the Historic Landmark Commission.
That's not gonna happen. Any changes to the outside?
At this time, no. It, there's no, we haven't been given any building permits, so...
Okay, thank you.
But that would automatically trigger going to the historic, right?
If he were changing the exterior of the building, yes. But if he were doing renovations where it's like-for-like, then no, it wouldn't need Historic Landmark Commission review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wharton? Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
Uh, tell us what you're about to do.
Uh, well, that's, we've got nine addresses there. Well, sorry, it's eight addresses, nine units. Currently 30% occupied. It's been about 30% occupied for about four or five years. It's taken me that long to get it bought. Some of the uses that are currently in this business, one of them specifically, it's been there 10 years, does require the zoning change for them to even operate. They didn't get an occupancy when they originally moved in. Um, I want to retain the tenant, and so I'm doing this for them, along with future tenants that I have that want to be in the building. Um, it's a good spot. Good, it's the only issue with the property is limited parking in the rear.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
If you can go to an aerial, again?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, to the, to the west of that, there's three buildings. You can see three white roofs. I own those there. We've got about 55 parking spots. Um, we are full there, but I've got a lot of parking in the back. To the east of that, there's two buildings with the drive in the middle. I've got about 25 parking spots there as well, which is properties I also own. And we're using very light at, at the one on the, right there, correct? We've got about, most of that's covered. We've got about 25 free spots there. Uh, the parking was needed within, I think, 300 feet to be accessible. Those, both, uh, past that. But I think the majority of our parking will be in my three-building setup right there to the, to the west.
Compliance on all those would come through the permitting, right?
Yes, which I've, I've ran by them already, and they're, they're okaying with our parking.
Any questions for the gentleman? Good luck, sir.
I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? We heard none. This concludes the cases that we have in front of us. The Honorable Mayor would set us home.
We need a motion.
Oh. Okay. They're taking off for you now. Great, great. So we heard from the audi, um, audience. We heard from the applicant and the staff, and no opposition. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved. With the condition?
One condition.
Have a motion to approve with three conditions. And a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you.